Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-four through January two thousand and twenty-five. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting has also been posted to the municipal website, www.pristin nj.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by the Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raised hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, will you please take the role?
Certainly. Mr. Bodenheimer? Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Ms. Perlmutter?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson? Mrs. Wilson? And Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. For any of our participants who are tuning in tonight to hear the Estate Shore four seven nine Jefferson Road continuation from April eighteenth, that portion of our meeting has been postponed. No date has been set as for when it will resume. I understand that the applicant will have to renotice when a new date is set, or we recommend that people check their municipal calendar at the homepage, www.pristin nj.gov. Are there any announcements tonight? Justin, do you have any?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chair, Sir Chair. Outside of that announcement, which was noticed on the application, and I think that worked, to, you know, maybe the people who were interested in that case saw that on the agenda and might have taken note of it. Just two other announcements. The Chair, the Vice Chair, and myself will meet again with the municipal attorney in the next week or so to discuss revisions to the board's bylaws. And this is a process that's been going on for some time now. And hopefully, that's, you know, our last meeting before sending that to the Procedures Committee for them to review and then ultimately to bring something to the full board for a vote on any changes to those bylaws. So just an update, but you'll start seeing more of that hopefully soon.
Great.
And one other announcement. So the three forty-four Nassau Street LLC application scheduled for the special meeting for next Thursday will not be heard that night. There's no date set now for when they're coming back, but it has been postponed from next week. I spoke with the Chair, and she said the meeting can be canceled, so we will send out information about that regarding next week's meeting, or lack thereof.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, Justin.
Yep.
Moving on to subcommittee meetings, I don't believe there have been any meetings since our last. There was a site plan. Yes, David?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, we were scheduled to have a site plan meeting yesterday, but we failed to get a quorum, so Ian is working on finding a follow-up date that works for people.
Okay, terrific. And no other subcommittee meetings have taken place? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have minutes of the regular meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I know that some editorial corrections have been made and submitted to the minutes. Carrie, do we need to read those into the record?
Yes, and I can do that if you would like me to, or you can.
Please.
Okay. On page three, there was one of the references made to Zoom, and one of my references did not capitalize the first initial for Zoom, and that will be done. On page seven, third line from the bottom, I added the word "is" after municipality, so it said "the municipality is in the process." And the beginning of that sentence actually was a statement by Mr. Lesko. That's the only edits that I have.
Great. Does anybody?
If there are any others, I'm sorry.
Any other comments or amendments to the minutes from October nineteenth? Okay, not seeing anybody. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes? David, very much. David Cohen making the motion and a second?
Second.
Alvin McGowan, thank you very much for making the section, the second. Carrie, would you like to? Do we take a vote on this, or do we just?
Yes, yes. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks? Oops, sorry. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the findings of fact for Princeton Academy of the Sacred Heart. This was a meeting held. Yes, David?
Yeah, I actually want to request that we carry this to our next meeting. I have one or two items that I'd like to consult with legal counsel offline about before we bring it to a vote. And I spoke with Justin about it. I think he was okay with it.
Okay.
Certainly.
Does anybody have any questions or any other comments to be made? If not, then we will carry this to our next meeting. Not seeing any, we will put that on the agenda for our next meeting. So that David can resolve the questions that he has. Thank you very much for that, David.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll move right along to our application for this evening. Our application for tonight is from Ten Acre Foundation. It is a modification to a major site development located at eight eight four and nine five three Great Road, that is block thirty-five oh one, lot eight, and block thirty-six oh one, lot one. The file number is P two four two four dash four four nine PD. Jerry, do we have jurisdiction and proper notice?
Notice is proper, and Carrie, if you could confirm that the proof of publication and service are in order?
Everything is in order, yes.
Board therefore has jurisdiction.
Terrific. Thank you very much. We'll be hearing from, on the staff side, Justin, I believe Justin Lesko is here, Dan Weissman and Joe Scoopian, I saw here before, there he is, right? So if you people can activate your cameras and be sworn in by Jerry, since this is being considered a new application.
Right, exactly. If you could raise your right hands, the three staff members? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
And Dan, you here?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you. So sworn.
Justin, you wanna, Justin and Dan, you wanna take it away?
Certainly. I could give us a very brief introduction before handing it over to Dan, if you don't mind me sharing my screen. And it's loading. What you're seeing before you is from the Rowan University NJ parcel map, publicly available online, NJ parcel explorer, excuse me. The subject property is in the blue outline, block thirty-five oh one. Oh, excuse me, I think I am. I think I'm just off on this. Thirty-five oh one eight.
Yeah, it's not.
Is it the large one in the middle? I'm sorry.
You actually have it right, Justin. The one with the solar panels is the original project, and then across the street in the main campus is the additional mitigation.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And we'll mark that just electronically as Exhibit BP one. And Justin, if you could repeat again what it is?
Sure. So this is aerial imagery from the NJ parcel explorer, created by Rowan University and hosted online publicly.
Thank you.
And as you can see, the Ten Acre Foundation's subject property is off of Great Road, just after where it forks, near Stewart Road. It's adjacent to the Princeton Day School, or near at least, and the Stewart Country Day School is nearby. The application is for a modification to an approval by the Planning Board in two thousand and twenty-one, which included new residential buildings and a multipurpose building, as well as related walkways, driveways, and parking areas. So with that being said, I will turn it to Mr. Weissman to do the heavy lifting on this modification application. Lesko. Just to briefly run through, so this application is for a modification of an approved major site development. The request tonight would memorialize the removal of two stormwater variances that were granted on the original approval, and it would also approve a revised stormwater management mitigation plan associated with those variances. To provide some project history in relation to the modification, the development utilizes four stormwater management basins located at the four corners of the site, and due to technical and environmental site constraints, these basins did not qualify as green infrastructure. Variance relief from the stormwater control ordinance was required and approved for each of these basins. In accordance with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, their stormwater management rules variances from the stormwater regulations can only be granted if a mitigation project is also approved with the variance. The applicant supplied and the mitigation that was approved utilized an existing basin on the west side of Great Road that had sufficient capacity to account for the required mitigation. The application before the board tonight has revised the two easternmost basins to qualify as green infrastructure, thus negating the two variances for those basins. The two westernmost basins cannot be revised, and the variance approval would still stand. As such, the applicant is proposing a new revised mitigation project in the form of a small-scale bioretention basin located across Great Road. The mitigation project meets the DEP requirements and has been reviewed by the municipality's stormwater management consultant, Joe Scoopian, who's also here tonight, and we are available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Scoopian, do you have anything to add?
Joe, when I swore in the staff members, I didn't hear you.
I do.
So sworn.
I'm sorry, sir. Probably was muted.
Okay.
Really, Dan did a great job. We're here to ask for approval, or the applicant's here to ask for approval of variances for two of the four basins rather than the originally approved variance for all four basins. I have to give credit both to Tom Fick at Carroll Engineering, the site engineer, and to Ten Acre for trying real hard and succeeding in coming up with making two of the four basins finally do meet green infrastructure, so therefore do not need variances, and also for coming up with a really good new mitigation project to mitigate the effects of the two basins, the two remaining basins that do need the variance. So we're going from four to two. Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for our staff? Members? Not seeing any. Mr. Kennedy, welcome to you and your team.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
You're here tonight. Again, once we're since we are considering this as a new application, we're going to have to swear in your expert witnesses, as well as qualify them this evening.
Happy to, Mr. Chairman. We'll have two witnesses as planned this evening. Thomas Fick, as Mr. Scoopian noted, is our engineer. Pete Hathrell will be our witness from Ten Acre Foundation, and you might have, some of you might remember from the two thousand and twenty-one application, so if we can have both of them. And we also have Tom Lind from the foundation as well. I don't think we need any testimony from him, but might as well swear them all in together, just in case.
Sounds like a great idea.
If the three, you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
Well, thank you all for hearing us tonight. My name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee down on Princeton Pike in Lawrenceville here for the applicant Ten Acre Foundation. As Mr. Lesko and Mr. Weissman and Mr. Scoopian noted, this was a project that we were really proud of in two thousand and twenty-one for Ten Acre Foundation. We called it the residential cottages, and there was the multipurpose building for use on campus. There are a lot of environmentally friendly and kind of innovative practices engaged, but ultimately, this was the first application that was heard with, under the new stormwater rules. And I think we're all, no pun intended, still getting our feet wet with how it worked. And as you heard, there were four variances granted, one for each of these basins. And after the fact, as the project was being built, the staff and Ten Acre Foundation have been working towards eliminating as many of those variances as possible. And then ultimately, for two of them that really couldn't be changed sufficiently, providing the additional mitigation measures that turns out DEP wanted to see with the grant of those variances. We'll have two witnesses and one set of exhibits. If we could, I'll be happy to share my screen and mark what we've got as twelve slides as our one exhibit this evening, if that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine. And that'll be A1.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to reintroduce or introduce for the first time, if you weren't here for the two thousand and twenty-one application, Pete Hathrell from the Ten Acre Foundation, who I'd like to ask him explain his role as helping with special projects at this point, because this might be one of his last times before you guys, as we transition into some new leadership there.
Thanks, Ryan, and good evening, everyone. So yes, I'm Pete Hathrell, and I was the project coordinator for this building project for Ten Acre, and recently, just in the process of retiring from Ten Acre after a long and happy work life there, and now acting as a consultant to help this project of the mitigation. So as has been mentioned, in two thousand and twenty-one, the Planning Board, many of you approved this project, and now the project is finished, and we're really enjoying using the spaces. It's complete, and it's sensitive landscaping, beautiful functioning buildings, and we appreciate the environmentally intuitive design that includes solar panels on the campus community center, the multipurpose building roof, and the way the buildings fit into the landscape beautifully with minimal lighting and the extensive use of pervious services. These buildings serve the staff and residents at Ten Acre, both as homes and a place for the staff and campus community to meet. During the project, the New Jersey Department of Environment determined that mitigation was required due to the stormwater outflows in two of the locations, and we've worked with Tom Fick, our civil engineer, and the professionals at Princeton to find a location and a design that would meet the requirements of the DEP and fit appropriately in our existing campus. And I have to say, the collaboration between Tom Fick and the Princeton professionals has been so appreciated by Ten Acre. It really has taken a great deal of thought and work and design, and to see the professionalism of the folks here in Princeton, the staff, and their willingness to work with us to try and take an existing stormwater system and make it appropriate for this, which is really very grateful for.
Thank you, Pete. As we often do, I'd like to kind of step through our slides and kind of orient the board to where we are in the former Princeton Township. So Pete, on slide two here, that arrow is kind of pointing generally to where the Ten Acre campus is?
Yes, that's right. Pretty much the main island there.
Moving to slide three, it's Princeton's newer zoning map. I guess the left arrow, that's that eight eighty-four?
Yes, that's a site where the cottages and the multipurpose building have been built, and the stormwater retention basins are, and the bigger blue arrow points to the main campus where the mitigation project will take place.
Slide four, similar to the photo that Mr. Lesko showed, but I guess this up here, if you can see my cursor, that's eight eighty-four, you can see the solar panel project and where the cottages were to be built, and then the main campus here on the other side of the street?
Yes.
So next, this was the caption of what was approved in two thousand and twenty-one, but this was one of the preliminary exhibits of what we thought this would look like when constructed. And then, Pete, this is some photos of what it actually looks like built. Do you want to take the board through, you know, what was constructed here and how it's used?
Absolutely. So on the left-hand side, you can see some images of the cottages that were built. There are three cottage blocks, and they were very much built in the style of a modern village, and also that they would be appropriate for the existing house, which you can see in the bottom center, that they took architectural cues from those, and they've proved to be very good, very efficient, great design of space, and the people who are now living in those spaces really appreciate them for their efficiency, their location on the campus, and the design within the village. And then on the bottom right, you can see the multipurpose building, a beautiful building, which fits right in the landscape, and when you're in there, you literally have a wall of glass all around you, so it feels very much like you are within the pastoral bucolic landscape that's up there.
Thank you, Pete. With that, if the board has any questions operationally or about the existing project house constructed, happy to make Mr. Hathrell available now, otherwise we'd move to our engineering testimony.
I see no questions, no hands raised, so let's move on to Mr. Fick.
All right. Tom, I know you've definitely testified many times before this board before, including on this project that was approved in two thousand and twenty-one, but this is a new application. If you could briefly give the board the benefit of your credentials, so we can have you accepted as an expert here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Fick, Thomas Fick. I'm with Carroll Engineering. I've been with Carroll for over twenty-five years, licensed engineer, state of New Jersey, as well as Pennsylvania. I'm also a lead accredited professional. I testified in front of this board, as well as other boards throughout the state of New Jersey, and I've been working for Ten Acre for sometime in the late nineties, I believe, when I was first brought on to to the properties here, and so I have vast knowledge of Ten Acre's improvements in infrastructure, and I were the lead engineer on the residential cottages and multipurpose application.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fick, can you please speak a little clearer into your mic? There was a little garble.
Yes, true. Thank you, Gary.
All right. So I think, Mr. Chair, I heard that backwards, the acceptance of Mr. Fick. I heard that right, thank you. And Tom, if you could, we're on slide seven here. I think we've got a map from your plans clip that shows the original project location on with the left arrow, and then a bigger arrow showing the main campus. And then on the right, I suppose that that's the rendering of what was proposed, kind of showing where on the zoomed-in map those cottages were built. But we have that right?
That is correct, yes.
Slide eight, now kind of zooming in a little bit on the mitigation site. Tell us what we're kind of looking at here on the right.
So the area on the right is a grass area that's occupied by actually a bioretention swale that was created back in two thousand and ten, I believe, or between two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve. That was actually a bioretention swale designed under a former addition of the stormwater rules. However, most of the area is primarily breast. And that swale does pick up surfaces, both impervious and pervious surfaces on the main campus, draining from the north into the swell, which then eventually leads into the existing bioretention basin on, at the location of eighty-four Great Road.
So next, moving to slide nine, I guess this is a portion of the plans for that mitigation area. You want to take the board through what you actually designed and are building here?
Sure. So this is our design of our mitigation basin. It's a bioretention basin. Generally going to follow the alignment of the existing bioretention swale that's there. It's going to effectively replace it. It's designed in accordance with the New Jersey stormwater rules. It contains an underdrain, it contains bioretention mix, a sand layer, and it'll be seeded, planted with a variety of bioretention type of plantings. It fits in nicely in that open space grass area. It will, it meets the stormwater rules because it is in the same Huck fourteen watershed as our other project across the street. In order for a mitigation project to be considered, it needs to be also needs to be discharged in the same water court, to the same water course, and also located upstream from our development that is subject to the variance. So therefore, this was an ideal location. It's right across the street. It's an unused piece of land. Ultimately, Ten Acre would love to eliminate it in terms of lawn maintenance. It was being cut now constantly, so now it'll just become a more or less a slight depression in the ground, vegetated. I know Ten Acre will do an exceptional job of landscaping on this, you know, in this facility. And so this was actually a great location for it. It does pick up the upstream water, upstream drainage area from the site. It does pick up. It not only mitigates for the areas that are for the variance, but also it does effectively treat the entire drainage area from the upstream portion of the site. So what we have here is a small-scale green infrastructure basin that's in accordance with the current stormwater.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we've got a kind of a visual tour, I think, of the basins on the eight eighty-four site, the four basins, and some of the other mitigation materials. So do you want to probably just drive a little bit about what we're looking at here?
What we're looking at is the four basins that we designed on the eighty-four project. The top left is the basin at the front, one of the basins up front. That was one of the basins that we modified to remove the variances. The one on the lower right is the other basin near the front of the property that we also modified to eliminate the variances. The other two basins on the bottom of the slide, one on the left and the one on the right, they're both due to the proximity of wetlands and transition areas, and also topography, we were unable to revise those basins to comply with green infrastructure standards. Therefore, they are the subject of variance, of two variances.
And and top right, just because I I think we all thought it was neat from from the original approval, but this is the pervious pavement that's kind of been kind of tucked into the the cartways on the project?
Well, the intent of this, this is the ribbon drive. This is the intent to minimize the amount of impervious on site. You know, we wanted to create a concrete surface so that we wouldn't have that heat island effect. It's a one-way drive that loops around the new development. And the purpose of the the gap in between the stone is just that the the intent was that the ribbons would would float into the the middle and then allowed to infiltrate into the stone. The the effect was obviously the the decrease of runoff on site.
Our last slide that doesn't say thank you, but maybe take the board. This this is the site plan for 884 with the existing basins, maybe just to walk the board again through which ones you were able to remove the variances for, and which ones get the extra mitigation across the street.
Here, this is so this is a sheet that was part of our application in 2021. And show the four basins in question. And the two basins in the front, basin one and basin two, we were able to modify and able to make them compliant with the rules. Basins three and four, as I mentioned, they're they're very, very close to environmentally sensitive areas. And in order to comply with the rules, we would have to expand those basins and then go into the environmentally restrictive areas, and and the topography also was not working in our favor as well. So we cannot change those two basins.
Great. Ultimately, the additional mitigation removes the two variances that were approved, but doesn't create any new waiver variance conditions with this new work?
No, for one.
So with that, happy to answer any questions that the board or officials may have, but thank you.
Thank you. David Cohen.
Thanks, Mr. Fick. I think you mentioned in order for a mitigation plan to qualify, it must discharge to the same water course as the project itself. Do you have on the aerial view, are you able to show us what water course all of these are discharging to?
It's it's all going to the Mountain Brook, which essentially goes through the same watershed, everything kind of flows into the into the Mountain Brook.
Does it show on the on one of the aerials? This one might.
Yeah, it's not really.
Too close in, but.
It's not really clear on this one. However, there are tributaries. There's one that goes through through the main campus. There's another one on the other side of 884, 884 Great Road. It's on the west side, everything kind of meets up at some point. So it's all part of the same watershed. So therefore, you know, everything, everything essentially flows. You know, all these watersheds actually flow in the same water course.
Okay, so when you talk about the west side, you're talking the top of the page here?
Yeah, if you turn to, yeah, it's it's above above the.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? Seeing none, I believe that I will open the meeting to public comment. We have three members of the public. If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand, and we'll move you over. Not seeing any hands raised from our three three attendees. So going once, going twice. Okay, we will now close public comment. Thank you very much. Does the board, David?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had just one more question that I forgot to ask before, which is can I know that the there was a prior mitigation project, which was to upgrade a nearby basin? Can you tell, can someone tell us, first of all, where that mitigation project was located? And secondly, if, you know, why this new mitigation project is preferable to that other mitigation project?
Right, bringing up the, okay, so underneath basin two there, between just along old, just along the Great Road, there's an existing basin there. It's just south of the new entrance that was just constructed for the 884 development. So that was that was a basin that was constructed back in 2010, between 2010, 2012. It does not meet the current New Jersey green infrastructure standards. It exceeds the drainage area required. There's a 2.5 acre maximum contributory drainage area, and unfortunately, DEP requires no more than two and a half acres that drains into your green infrastructure facility. So that was not, and also I believe there was also another requirement. I don't remember what that was exactly, but that was one of the that was the primary one is that, you know, it just it just didn't meet, didn't check off the boxes as far as the green infrastructure rules. So unfortunately, it was designed to compensate for future development. They built, Ten Acre built it to you know, for future development, and at the time, it was more or less state-of-the-art, you know, current green infrastructure at that time standards, but unfortunately, out of the current rules, it does not, it does not meet those new standards.
Yeah, Mr. Cohen, I can answer that very quickly. This was in the early, early phases or early days of the new Princeton ordinance and the new DEP stormwater rules. When, well, I'll be frank, even DEP was trying to figure out how to apply them. And there was an existing detention, existing buyer retention basin right along Great Road that Ten Acre had built maybe 10 years ago, roughly speaking, to do just this. They didn't need that basin. They didn't need the entire basin, but they enlarged it so that would be could be used for future development on the site rather than have to build small basins every time there was a new parking lot addition, let's say. And so at the time, with the new ordinance, the new rules, this basin being built, functioning perfectly, it was like the ideal mitigation site. It was, it's already there, it's functioning. And so we decided, good, that's a good mitigation site. As the rules, let's say, shook out and people understood exactly what they meant, it turns out that, no, that was not a good mitigation site because it was treating too much water. It had, it was, which didn't make a lot of sense, but I'll skip the editorializing. So working with Tom, working with Tom, we needed to find another mitigation site on the Ten Acre property that that would would not be too big. And turns out, this one was perfect. Two things I also want to point out. One is Tom mentioned that this it's this proposed mitigation site was already a treatment measure. It's important to note, though, that that treatment measure was built by Ten Acre as on their own. It was it was not meant to providing treatment for any development. It was not part of any project approval. It was simply something that Ten Acre on their own initiative went ahead and built. So what Tom has done is taken that existing treatment measure and brought it up to current standards, enlarged it, and but not too big, so it doesn't treat too much water. And so now that was that was the curve that was thrown early on, that the mitigation site was technically too big. And so Tom had to find a new one. The other thing I want to point out, and and Tom was, just to clarify for the record, the requirements for a mitigation site require that the mitigation be located not in the same watershed, because that's a pretty nebulous term, but within the same as hydrologic unit code that the U.S. Geological Survey has established. Now, it's called a HUC, H-U-C 14. They have at least 14 levels of of HUCs. The mitigation measure must be within the same HUC 14 area as the project that requires the mitigation. And this certainly does, it meets that requirement. However, this portion of the site doesn't go directly into Mountain Brook, which then drains into the Stony Brook. It drains into the Stony Brook directly. Eventually, it takes it quite a while to get there. So it's not the same watershed. This this area does not drain to the Mountain Brook like the mitigation site will, but they both drain to the same HUC 14 as required by the by the rules. Just again, for the record, I want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks, Joe, for the additional detail.
Okay. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments from the board members? And if not, then would someone like to make a motion on this application? David, I see you making a motion. Thank you very much.
Happy to move to approve the modification to the site plan.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second.
I I heard I heard Julie first. Okay, thank you very much. Dan Weissman has his hand up. Dan?
Not a second, but just wanted to comment, we had three staff comments in the staff report and are requesting if those can be made conditions of approval.
Dan, can we go over them for a second? Is one of a 4.0B staff comment?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second one is 5.01?
Yes.
Oh, and the third is, I'm sorry, 4.0J1, correct?
Yes.
Great. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any comments on those?
No, no, we're happy to comply with all of the all of the comments from from the memorandum.
Terrific. Thank you very much. So the motion has been made by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Ms. Capizoli. Curry, would you like to call the roll, please?
Certainly, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Special thanks to staff. This has been a long time coming of of collaboration, and we're very appreciative of the the working relationship in 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 figuring all this all out. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Kennedy. Moving ahead, we are going to open the the second application that we had hearing tonight, simply to carry it to a further meeting. This is the Estate Shore LLC minor subdivision with variances located at 479 Jefferson Road, block 5408, lot one. File number P2323-403MS. Jerry or Justin, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time, or?
I do not.
Okay.
I, when when is it being carried to?
We do not have a date at this point.
Then we can't carry it, can we?
Oh.
No, not really. They're going, the applicant is required to renotice when a date is determined after we receive the plans for review.
So Jerry, what is the appropriate thing to do? Is do we table it, or since we can't carry it?
Yeah, I mean, the only way we could carry it if we carried it to a date certain with the intention of probably not considering it at that point, which I don't think is a good idea. So I, yeah, I think what we what we need to do is table it.
Okay, I apologize for using the long terminology in that case. So we will table this application until such date to be determined.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. That is the extent of our agenda for this evening. There's a one more, one more item that I think Mr. Cohen is ready to jump on.
I'll move to adjourn.
Yeah, there has been a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Freddie, go ahead on this one.
I second.
We'll go with Freddie on the on the second. Thank you both very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. You made it a very simple night for me.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.